And we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve today's agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Hearing none, all in favor. Let's see, approval of minutes from November 12th meeting, all in favor. Oh, sorry, I gotta get in ahead of my schedule. I wanna get done. Motion second to approve the minutes from the November 12th meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
We did, they did come via email, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I want to acknowledge donations to our Resort of Justice program. We have donations, I only have first names here, looks like Haley, Evan, and Kara, and Rosie, and we do appreciate their donations. Thank you very much. And let's see, next item is planning and zoning items, Matt.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners? Alright, so a couple things for you this morning. First, at the Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to reappoint William Davis to his third year term. He represents an incorporated area on the Planning Commission, Dilworth. So that comes before you for approval.
Well, I'll just say, as one who serves on that, Bill is one of those members who will go out and drive to each site that's on for the Planning Commission's discussion. He's a valuable member of that board and has good opinions and is respected there. So I'll make a motion to reappoint him to that third term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, also, at our Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday, there's a, and this has kind of been in discussion for a little while, but the Planning Commission has made the decision to begin a process to make a series of minor revisions to our 2012 Clay County Land Development Code. So, you know, in my six months now here and working with Rita and Emma and the Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, over that period of time, we've run into some things that might need a little updating and tweaking to kind of reflect the realities of today as well as some inconsistencies and contradictions and things like that. So, the Planning Commission kind of wants to get that going. They formed a subcommittee, and it was their recommendation that they have two commissioners be a part of that subcommittee as well, since ultimately, any decisions that they make for the planning, with regards to our land development code, they have to be approved by you all, so.
So, the hope from the Planning Commission, the timeline, was that hopefully, within the next six months, we could meet a handful of times and kind of staff would do the work and then discuss what those changes may be. And so it won't be a commitment for a significant amount of time, but I felt that because it will come to this board, we should probably have two representatives. So, which one of you?
And the thought was you would be one of the representatives being on the Planning Commission, so.
Well, I'm in the Morehead City Planning already. I think that would probably be something that I could help with.
Okay.
Sounds like a volunteer to me.
We need a formal.
I'm going to appoint Jenny and Jim to the Planning Commission.
Subcommittee.
Development, land code, whoever.
Committee?
Committee.
Subcommittee.
Whatever this is.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Haney and Mojo to the subcommittee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, Darren, come on up. Next item is our human resource items, approval of letter of support to eliminate the Cadillac Tax.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. Happy Thanksgiving, to all those that are out there listening. First item on my agenda is something that's been really brewing since the conception of the Affordable Care Act, way back when, during the first term of Obama's presidency. And the Cadillac Tax is meant as a to rein in the healthcare spending costs while providing a stream of revenue for the government to pay for the Affordable Care Act. The tax was supposed to encourage companies to pay their employees higher salaries or wages instead of compensating them with lavish health benefits, which the government currently does not tax. The idea is that the expensive Cadillac tax plans are generous, too generous, allowing even encouraging people to go to the doctor when they might not need to. So what this was designed was to put a 40% tax on what the county, what the government put on a limit of how much somebody would have to pay for their healthcare costs. This has been a very contentious tax and not very popular at all, and as a result, it's been continually delayed of implementing it. But I got, I got a message a couple weeks ago from AMC, which is supporting the repeal of this tax by the US government. And what AMC is looking for is a supporting letter from this board to say, yes, we also want to repeal this Cadillac Tax. The totals that would be indexed, that would be indexed yearly, based on a single premium and a family premium, and what the fear is, is anything over what the government sets as a single or family premium would be then taxed at 40%. So as you can see, it wasn't a very popular tax, and now they're in the process of trying to repeal this. I can tell you, this would have impacted us for our, when we had our double goal that we discontinued several years ago, and it probably would have had an impact on our triple goal that we just did and discontinued beginning next year. So it would have had an impact on us. I really had this tax go into effect, and the tax is supposed to go into effect in 2022, but if you back that, there's a lot of that that has to happen in 2021 to get this done. So what I'm doing is looking for support. It is an online form, so I do have a hard copy for you to sign, but the actual form to fill out and support, I would do online to do that. So, that is the proposal that's on the board's agenda today.
Thank you. We're in board's wishes on this.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the letter of support, or sign the letter of support to eliminate the ACA IRS excise tax, also known as the Cadillac Tax.
I'll second the motion, but just to note, you know, in here, it doesn't say Minnesota at all, it just says Clay County Board Chair, and it's going to Washington DC, we should clarify.
For the state?
Well, you have it to Majority Leader McConnell and Schumer.
There could be several Clay Counties.
Yeah, I can make sure it's Minnesota, because we get calls for Clay County.
States have it.
Yeah. The one quick note is that since the ACA went into effect, we have put in our contracts, all of our contracts language, that if this were to ever go into effect, we could reopen the contract negotiations and negotiate this out if we had to, or negotiate for it if we had to, just as a sidebar.
Okay, we had a motion to send a letter with the addition of adding Minnesota to it. Do we have a second?
Yeah, we had a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I did.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. The other agenda item I have is I just wanted to bring you the three contracts that we had outstanding at this time, the correctional officers, the correctional sergeants, and the highway department. I have signed copies of the correctional sergeants and correctional officers contracts here that would need signatures. The highway contract has been voted on, but I don't have a signed contract of that yet. So what I'd like to do is get approval to proceed and get signatures on these three contracts. The biggest note to all of them is that all of them have agreed and contain the new language for the county contribution and the healthcare benefits for next year, so that's all completed as well. And also, the increases based on the wage study and the COLAs for the coming years. So it would have taken into account the wage study and COLA for next year, and then for 2021 is 3%, which we have with other unions already, and then for 2022, the 2% COLA, which everybody has agreed to as well. The only increases, which were extremely minimal, was with the highway department, was an increase of $2.50 for winter apparel costs, that's per person, and that's every other year. Basically comes to about $55 per the, for two of the three years. And then a weekend on-call increase of 48 cents per day, and that, looking back, would have been thirty, about a little over $37 in 2018 and $24 in 2019, so we're not talking, it's 48 cents per day, you know, per hour, so pretty minimal costs. Basically, what we're trying to do is tie it to whatever COLA is that day, or that year, rather.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to just, if this agenda item becomes part of the minutes, I would just like to see that worded differently here. Were you, say the bargaining units have agreed to a 7.42? We're not agreeing to that, we're agreeing to a 2, 3, and 2.
Correct, for the COLAs.
So I think that should be noted and changed on there, and then, in that next sentence, 2020 also includes a 5.42 market adjustment.
Right, it makes it sound like it's 5.42 above.
Well, it can, but it, the actual agreements are 2, 3, and 2.
Correct.
So if we can just, if this is gonna be part of the record, it should.
Sure. I can update that. Do you want me to update it and send it to you, or how do you do it? Sure. Is that a motion, Kevin, with your question?
Yeah. Second.
Motion and a second on this three item. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Mark Sloan, come on up. Request for approval of enterprise license agreement with ESRI.
Good morning.
Morning.
To, we use ESRI software for our GIS systems here, and to make it simpler for pricing and budgeting, we actually use an enterprise license agreement, which allows us some flexibility in what we do, as well as it sets our rate for how much we're gonna spend, and it actually saves us quite a bit of money. It's, we renew this contract every third year, and it's up for renewal right now. We had some concerns earlier that the rates would go up, but fortunately, they kept the rates the same, so we're renewing for another three years with the same exact rate we've been paying, which is a good thing. So, it's a, overall, it's a good contract for Clay County.
Okay. Any questions for Mark?
Make a motion to approve the contract for three years?
Three years.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the request on the contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, ESRI also provides user training, and I have a conference every year that many of our people we work with around here attend. We've heard a lot of good things about over the years, and I'd like to send our GIS specialists to it next summer. The conference attendance itself is included with our enterprise license agreement that we just did. Our only expenses would be our travel expense to send, to send her there.
Okay. Are the board's wishes?
I would, I would move approval of the travel. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the travel request. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. I have one quick thing for you, though. When we started streaming our meetings last summer, we used the widescreen format for, but our cameras in here are standard definition cameras, so in the last couple meetings, we've been streaming in a standard definition format, which puts black bars on the sides of the screen.
Uh huh.
If anybody has any comments or suggestions on which way you prefer, just let us know, we can go either direction. Our thought was maybe people didn't want to look wider than they already were, but.
I appreciate that.
So, if anybody out there has any input on that, just let us know, we can address that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you even make it narrower?
Next item is recommendation for approval of grant funding application for Agassizie Recreational Trail. Morning.
Good morning. The year was out today, so we'll be taking it. So this is just the grant application that we fill out every year, which covers like our mudslinger costs, our maintenance of the trail, mowing, all of that. It goes from Yulin up to the county line. I believe that's correct, right, Frank?
Yeah, probably.
And then as well as bridge inspection.
Back to Yulin there, yeah.
Yep.
Now, we get these funds every year to continue Agassizie Valley Trail, and I think a motion, we continue doing that.
Second motion.
Motion and a second to approve the request on the grant funding application.
The resolution.
What's the resolution?
Resolution number 2019 grant 40.
On that resolution, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think maybe we'll do some committee reports and wait a little bit on this next item, see if anybody else shows up that has an interest in it. Jenny, you want to go with your committee report?
Last week, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission, where we discussed the two items that we've already discussed here. We did have one public hearing from the Don Robson Trust in Mullen Township to create a therapy horse-riding center with a focus on veterans' therapies and older adult therapies. Good conversation on that. It's definitely a well-planned-out model, so the Planning Commission did go ahead and unanimously approve that recommendation. Last week, I also attended the Joint Powers Board Meeting at the Red River Basin Commission. We had a presentation from Dan Olson from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency on the Minnesota Impaired Waters List. Pretty interesting information out there on what bodies of water are on those lists. There are several in Clay County. You can go on to their website if you're a data nerd and want to look at all that stuff. But otherwise, good information. And just had updates from the other member agencies on what's going on in their own counties. And then we did have a pretty good conversation on septic systems and capping systems, and our SWCD does a really good job of working with landowners to address those concerns. Last week, I also attended the MetroCog Policy Board Meeting, had general discussion on past meeting agendas and minutes. We did discuss and act on the Metro Grow 2045 MTP Plan. That was, I think out of all the presentations they've done this year, they did a really good job of doing one central presentation of the larger scheme things, and then kind of came to each entity and did smaller presentations. So I think definitely got the information out there. We did approve that, and we also approved the Matbus 2021-2025 Transit Development Plan that's going out for RFP. And then we did have pretty good discussion on the why 17th Street North in Morehead is so wide, if you are interested. Do you know why?
No, I don't know why, but I know.
So there's all these different reasons that maybe it was supposed to be part of the KT, or that Crystal Sugar wanted it, or whatever, but it just appears as though the person that developed the subdivision, elders subdivision, it was Park Avenue in the middle of the subdivision, and it was just wider because he thought maybe you could get more money for the lots. So, interesting, huh?
We're lucky it's so wide with the growth of our Christian school there.
Yeah, great, so anyways, yeah, it's 140 feet wide and the standard at the time was 80, so. Mark Peal at the Historical Society.
Got those answers?
Yep. Okay, and then yesterday, I traveled to Fergus Falls for the Lakeland Mental Health Board Meeting, a good discussion on the 2020 service plan budget. That was recommended to approve as a preliminary budget, but pretty consistent numbers there. Had a report from the Otter Tail Collaborative, and the Clay County Collaborative will meet next week. And then the center has been working with Sanford inpatient and outpatient treatment. There seems to be some barriers in terms of people that are patients at Lakeland, and then if they're hospitalized, oftentimes the providers aren't working together, and so they're just trying to stream that better to coordinate the treatment. And we did have discussion, there was a $185,000 grant that we approved to hire for two years some peer specialists, not professional level, but just people that have either dealt with mental health or addiction issues and then can help the caseloads, so. I believe that concludes my.
I do. Kevin?
Okay, let's see, on the 19th, I had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and that one, we got an update, or we got some information from Cromwell Township regarding 225th Street, and they'd like the county to take that over, so there's a, that's not gonna be quite as easy as they would like. And we did, had a little more discussion about the County 18 Durange Study that was done regarding, around the John Jones property, and we got construction updates on the Park Avenue project in Glendon, some turn lane discussion, some, there were some staffing issues, and then there was a request to change some part-time to full-time, and we recommend that that go to PIC for further review. The following day, the 20th, we had a Prairie Lakes Meeting in Purim, and we had a Regional Four update regarding, looking at a regional approach to recycling. The operation is going well, the funding is doing well, we're meeting our budget for 2019, and that's good news for that facility. That same day, we had a public outreach meeting, and we got some more information on the Bio-GEO monitoring easements, an update on the North Dakota Water Conference on December 3rd to the 6th, and we're continuing to work on a communication plan update, and we talked about our 2020 calendar. And next week, that same day, we also had a land management meeting, and that one, we had a, we got our properties acquisition status report as usual. We looked at and recommended a modification to our property acquisition program. And then on Thursday, we had the diversion authority meeting, and we got updates from the core, we got an update on the WIFIA events and the timeline. Then we got, of course, committee reports from public outreach and land and finance. And then we did approve two staffing requests for the new executive director, to have an assistant executive director and a administrative assistant, and I think in December, we're gonna be looking at finishing the rest of his proposed staffing organization. And yesterday, we had our two jail, both our jail and juvenile center construction project updates, and I'm gonna defer to Steve to give the details on that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah. Last Tuesday, I had the Highway Tracking, which Commissioner Campbell's already reported on, just on the Cromwell Township discussion of the 225th Street, I've also, since then contacted Cromwell Township, told us about, they've also got in contact with the City of Holland, trying to see what their thoughts are on that, and right now, I think Cromwell and City Hall need to talk to each other, which hasn't been done yet. And that, yeah, the hallway, I mean, excuse me, the Glendon project, that's on a standstill until next spring. We met, our building committee met, talked about plans where, that we can improve everybody, and I think we got everything all set to go now, all we need is the money, and then.
That's it?
Just a minor part there. No, they came up with some very good plans, you know, as far as how it's gonna evolve. I mean, one plan right now, those guys involve another building to house some of the people so we can put them in a, right now, we can move people around, move people around, you're still not gonna give them sufficient space. So should we do it right the first time, or should we keep on moving people around? So, they're coming up with some very good plans, and it's gonna be, I think they're gonna present those plans sometime.
Yeah, our next meeting is gonna be in January, we're gonna wait through the holidays, and then potentially after that, we'll have something before the board.
Yeah, okay. Also, the Historical Society meeting last Wednesday, things are still going great there. I mean, they had around 600 kids going through there from the Moore District, School District, Comstock Houses have a good attendance there, too, and everything's going good there yet, I mean, so they're having a good year. Those are my three meetings.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Tuesday, I attended the Clay County Master Planning Committee Meeting, along with Commissioner Gross and Steve. And on Wednesday, November 20th, I attended the Diversion Finance Committee, and we received the executive director, Joel Paulson's financial report, Mr. Paulson's requesting support staff going forward, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned. Discussion followed regarding who, what, and why, and the organizational charts, and what can be performed by existing Fargo and Cass County Financial Engineering and HR employees. Hiring full-time employees versus contract employees was discussed. Joel's position is because of complexity issues, beginning in 2021, in full-board construction, he's gonna need that staff ready to go. And Commissioner Grinberg argued that Joel needs to have a core team, and just went back and forth. Also, a travel and expense policy for Joel's staff and entity members, traveling on diversion authority issues were discussed. A motion passed to have the diversion authority reimburse various entities going forward into 2020 for travel as necessary. And then on Thursday, November 21st, I attended the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board of Custodes Meeting, and we revised the code of conduct policy so that it formerly read no drinking in the library, but now drunken behavior is also prohibited in there. And all the officers were re-elected to another term on the executive board, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's see, I had the Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Meeting, and we'll be discussing most of that here shortly. I had the jail detention, and I think Steve's gonna report on that, and then I had the Greater Fargo Ward EDC Executive Committee Meeting, and mainly talked about our budget issues for next year, and then I, they have a summary of what the EDC does and how it partners with Valley Prosperity Partnership, fueling the future in the Michigan Prairie, and I think it's a nice summary of how that works for everybody, so. And that was it for me. Steve?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking Meeting. Last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking Meeting that Commissioner Gross and Campbell have discussed. Also that afternoon, the master planning, as I mentioned, we're looking at, with the holidays, looking at meeting after the new year to explore the different options. On the 20th, I participated in central administration. Some of the topics there were preparing this boardroom for, for the courts coming up around the first of the year. Our HR and payroll system has been, the company has been purchased by another company. And so we're going to be looking for different options for, for those services. We also talked about the capital planning that Joe's been working on for the campus. On 21st, I attended the administrators meeting in Morrison County. We discussed budgets, budgets and levies. One of the other things that, just to put this on the, the board's radar is that, as you're all aware, DHS, the state has been having some challenges. They have a new, they have a new commissioner that's in charge and she'll put together a 90-day plan to kind of root out some of the billing, billing and payment issues that we've been having on the state level. One of the issues that they've identified is 4E eligibility. It's a federal program dealing with the multiple programs on social services. They've identified that the state's way of allocating the funds was flawed and that all, all of the counties in Minnesota receive funding that it should not have received. So I want to put that on your radar, just from the standpoint of one of the requests that DHS has made is that the counties don't pay back the state.
I did want to ask you about that because we had that conversation at Lakeland yesterday. And so it's my understanding that DHS knew that they shouldn't have been reimbursing and continued to do so. And is it true that Hennepin County could have to pay back $2 million?
That, that is the, what, yes, that, that is true.
I mean, that, you'll definitely talk that at AMC with your policy committees, but I mean.
Yeah. So AMC, at this point, DHS is not asking for, for the repayment, but, but could be AMC is, is taking this up on their platform and also the Social Service Association is also looking at legislative action to have the state kind of help pay for that, that issue. But I wanted to, wanted to put that on the board's radar. And so I'm meeting with Rhonda on a series of other issues next week. So that'll be one of the things that we talk about. I know she's been active in reaching out to, to the state. See, but just to touch base on the master plan, I think Joel's been kind of trying to wait, to wait on a number of things depending on where the master planning, direction that it went. There are a couple of different things on the priority years from 19 to 22 that I think are not going to be impacted either way, whatever direction we go as a, as accounting. And so he'll be most likely bringing that before the building committee and then the board here in the next month or so. Met with Shelley Jeffords yesterday in regards to some of the court's needs with this courtroom and future needs. Participated in the diversion chair coordinator session that Commissioner Campbell talked about that afternoon. I met in the jail and LEC meeting. I think that we're getting very close with the LEC. They're kind of getting to the finishing touches with the paint, the carpets. And they've kind of stuck with their January 12th number or date for us as far as taking over phase two. And so that's, that's pretty exciting. The juvenile center, they're continuing to move forward. They've been faced with some, some challenges as their, their numbers have continued to be extremely high. One of the last phases of the, of the project is remodeling, remodeling the existing floors on the third floor with paint and flooring. So they're trying to find minimize the way of not losing or minimizing the number of beds they lose during that process as we've been having challenges with turning down, turning down some of our members. We're going to be meeting later this, later this week with Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Whalen and James O'Donnell trying to get a good path moving forward there. So yesterday afternoon, we had the department had the evaluation. And just think, one thing I've just brought for the board's consideration, next week, we have truth and taxation. Our board meeting is scheduled at five o'clock. Truth and taxation is at six. Right now, our, our board agenda is extremely light for the five o'clock meeting. I don't know if you would want to consider sliding that back a half an hour or if you would want that break or not, but so.
Well, we're not sure yet, are we?
We, yeah, well, technically tomorrow's the deadline with the holiday coming up. So we don't have a whole, whole lot of on agenda at this point.
I think 5:15 or 5:30 is fine.
Well, it's light. Let's go with 5:30. I'm making a motion. Move to media 5:30.
Motion second for the 5:30 meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say if I was saying aye. If the same side motion carries.
All right, that concludes my report. Thanks. Kevin, you?
I, I do have a couple of things to add. At the very end of our jail construction meeting yesterday, it was brought to our attention again, the need for the scanning equipment. That if you recall, it was originally in the 2020 budget request, which was removed. But what we're finding here is, and what I, what I suggested that we do is talk with Lori, there still is some significant dollars remaining that, from the, from the construction budget and the bonding dollars that we had. So if we can, if there's a way we can use those dollars and not be part of our budget and still get that accomplished. So that's in the process of being looked at. Lori's going to be looking at doing that. It's something that they certainly feel they really need. And, you know, we were kind of under pretty tight decision-making for what if it can fall outside of that and if there's still money available, either through contingencies or what have you. That's, it's, we just asked them to look at that. So just, that might be coming back to us again. And then I did not, I forgot to report on the MCC GAPA meeting. That was also last Thursday, the 21st. And we did talk about, I did talk about with them about this board's desire to have a separate law firm handle the, any court action or proceedings that Clay County deals with. They're, they're aware of that. And it's the same, that we would operate the same as the Cass County Joint Resource District. And then we did, of course, we did have some dialogue on what we're about to have here on this next item regarding the rights of entry. And then when Jessica comes up too, I would also, once we get through this, I would maybe like to have her give a, this board, we, we set a date for December 11th to have an open meeting with property owners who we are requesting easements for the Bio.
I'm asking, do you, what are they studying?
Yeah, but we can maybe do that when you come up here in just a minute. But just, I just want to let them know that that was part of what, what this discussion was. And so we've been, there's going to be an invitation to all of them and maybe Jessica can further explain that in a minute. But I just wanted to add that to my report.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to our last item, request to utilize court action to acquire right of entry to 26 Clay County properties. Jessica and Chris, come on up.
And John.
And John.
Well, I prepared a resolution of necessity, which is what you had requested last week. And that complies with the Minnesota statute 117041 for right of entry that is necessary before, for design purposes and before any kind of eminent domain would take place. Just as a reminder, and I know that you're relatively new to this process for what right of entry is, right of entry is, is an opportunity to go on certain properties that may or may not be impacted by the project, but are necessary for, for study. And we walked through the five or six different types of studies that might take place. And, you know, some of them, such as a historic building, could very well be protected by the project. But the view shed from that historic building might be something that is impacted and therefore to comply with all the, the requirements and regulation, you have to go on that property, you have to take a look at it, you have to see what the, the view shed impact is. So even if you're protected, you might ultimately have to allow for, for entry on your property to do that. I'm not sure if any of these properties fall into that category, but, but most of the properties that, that are impacted in this request are necessary for geotechnical purposes. So to go out and do soil borings to figure out, should the, should the project be located here or should it be located, it doesn't need to be wider in certain spots? Can it be narrower in certain spots? I know on the North Dakota side, they have found bays of sand, which, which cause problems for any kind of a levy system because it allows for conduit, conduction of water underneath the surface. So then they have to modify the design of the actual project. And, and the core engineers needs to go out and confirm what the conditions are of the properties that, that they believe are impacted, that they believe design needs to take place on, whether that be for, for road raise purposes or for levy purposes. And that is, is what the request is that's before this board. To, to jump off of what Commissioner Campbell had, had discussed earlier with respect to biotic and geomorphological surveys, several of the properties that, that are in the resolution that has, has been, I believe included in your packet, are properties that are along a waterway. And the, the properties that are along waterways may have the requirement to do a biotic and geomorphological study. Again, I think I described it a little bit last time, but a biotic survey is where they go out primarily in boats and identify what is alive in the river. Could be fish, it could be mussels, it could be bugs, it could be anything that's alive that's in the river. They, they collect it, they count it, they put it back in the river. The, the reason that they need the ability to go up on shore is for two reasons. Number one is many times when they, when they get something that's alive, they want to stand on shore to, to count it and catalog it. And then the other is the, the DNR, which is, is one of the main driving entities behind the biotic and geomorphological surveys. They, they want the ability to go out and observe the, the surveys. And that's not something that they have done much of up to this point, but, but they want the ability to do that. And as such, you have to walk relatively close to the river, but walk along those waterways. As I indicated, several of the 20-ish properties that, that are identified in, in Exhibit A to the, to the resolution are properties where we need to do, the core needs to do both geotechnical, which is boring soil analysis, that type of stuff, and biotic and geomorphological. The geomorphological, similar to geotechnical, but not, not identical, the geomorphological is a point is here and a point is here and the river's in between. And they take a bathymetric survey, which is the, the shape of the river and the, and the, the shape of the, of the river banks. And then they also do soil samples to identify, is it clay, is it silt, is it sand, is it, what is the, the material of the river bank and the, and the river bottom, which then goes into a calculation or, or an analysis of what is, what kind of erosion, what kind of impact is there. So with respect to the biotic and geomorphological surveys, there is another batch that will be coming through, through the process here to, they're going to have a meeting with landowners and, and explain what these things are. But to the extent that they're on this list, we wouldn't necessarily, we would not have to go back and acquire another right of entry for biotic and geomorphological because this resolution is, is flawed. It encompasses all of the different surveys, which includes biotic and geomorphological.
With these specific property owners?
Right. So, so the, the next step for the biotic and geomorphological is to send out separate agreements, which are more narrow for those properties that are not impacted by this initial round of, of survey requirement, but do need biological and geomorphological surveys. The process for what's in front of you today, this resolution of necessity, comes out of the statute 117041, which says that at least 10 days before entering the property, the political subdivision must serve notice on the property owner requesting permission to enter the property, stating the approximate duration and time of when the survey would take place. If the property owner refuses to consent to the entry, the state agency or political subdivision may apply for a court order authorizing the entry and the removal of any sample for geotechnical purposes. So the Minnesota, the Moorhead Clay County JPA and their land agents have made contact with these landowners for months. But to be safe, I would recommend that this board give another final attempt to comply with that statute. So another letter with another copy of the right of entry agreement and at least 10 days of, of lead time before, before we take any kind of a court action to force right of entry.
That's for the Cass County.
Cass County statutes, the North Dakota statutes are a little different. They don't require that 10-day notice. Now, we give plenty of notice. The land agents attempt to talk to them a lot. And even if we do get to the final stage, and it'll be the same in Minnesota, even if you do get to the final stage of having to start any kind of a court action, when we serve the people, we also include a copy of the, of the right of entry agreement saying, if you want to avoid this whole court action process, sign the right of entry agreement, send it back, we'll take your name off the list. So we give landowners as many off-ramps as we possibly can and opportunities to, to consent to this. And as I said last week, during that process, we have modified rights of entry slightly to, to accommodate landowners. For example, if there's horses, you know, there's got to be some sort of a notice as to when they're going to go out there. They have to have their horses in a certain location, that type of stuff. Or if there's, if there's a notice request by, by a landlord, you know, instead of giving me a week notice, can you give me 24 hours' notice? We don't want to have 100 different versions of these right of entry agreements because we don't want to intentionally or, or increase the odds that we're going to stub our toe by, by missing one of those, one of those modifications. But to the extent that, that something is reasonable, the project has been accommodating for.
How about crop?
Crop is, is something that, you know, I've been involved in rights of entry for this project for, for 10 years. And, and crop damage has always been a concern, but you can count on, on your two hands how many times crop damage has actually occurred until this year. And this year's a tough year for the farmers. You guys know that far better than I do. And unfortunately, it's a situation where the farmers can't necessarily get their crop out of the field during the timeframe that they normally do. So, so the contractors that need to go out there and do a, for example, cultural resources survey, they need to have a time period between, set between when the crops come off and when there's snow on the ground because they need to be able to see the ground. So, so they've always planned for after harvest or before plant. With this resolution and with the properties that are impacted here, the hope would be that, that none of this would, would take place until late winter, early spring. The hope would be that those crops would be off. But, but this year, there's no guarantees with respect to, to our poor farmers out there. So if there is a situation where we have a court order and beans couldn't get off because they were flooded, corn couldn't get off because it was too wet and there's no propane, if, if the, if the geotechnical boring rig is here and they need to get onto that property, they have to do it. It's, everybody has worked to avoid it. We've been, been willing, the project is willing to pay for those crop damages. I know that, that the Cass County Joint Water Resource District has, has identified, you know, an amount that they will pay per acre of crop damage and it's, it's generous. And, and it's, what they did is they took the, the most, the highest gross revenue crop and the highest reasonable level of, of yield. And they just used that. And I think they maybe increased it a little bit above that. But, but that board is, is two active farmers and two retired farmers.
So the point being is if there's crop, if there's crop damage, don't as a result So the point being is if there's crop, if there's crop damage as a result of the right of entry study or the borings or whatever, then they would be compensated?
Yeah.
They're compensated, and then they're also compensated for borings too.
Each boring would be, on the Cast County side or the North Dakota side, each boring is compensated $250. It's not a, it's not a payment for a taking, it's just a convenience type payment. And part of that is to identify, you had three borings on your property. I mean, three would be a lot, wouldn't that be an abnormal?
Crop damage last year, they decided $800 per acre or less, so.
Could you say how many acres were actually damaged?
Less than an acre.
Yeah.
Two, three, and they got reimbursed the full $800, so.
And also if there's any ruts, that's something where we leave it up to the landowner on the North Dakota side. If the landowner or the producer that's actually working the property wants to correct those ruts or any kind of impact on the field themselves, it's preferable because they're going to do it to the standards that they are satisfied with. And then they would be compensated for their time and fuel and equipment to usage and all that kind of stuff. If they say, no, you caused the rut, you fix it, you know, then a contractor would have to be engaged. But getting it to the standards of the producer is, is always a challenge.
Also then, can you explain, I know that there's been some discussion regarding the timeline for the, or the need for the easement for the bio. Because that, that's something that's a long-term study that's requested by, whether it's DNR or the core or what have you. Whereas these rights of entry are somewhat limited in their time, right? Can you explain?
Yeah, so the resolution that's in front of you is for, I believe, a year and a half period if I remember right.
Twenty-one, yeah.
And there's an end date. And this is just the right to go out a relatively limited number of times. It's not perpetual, it's not any kind of occupation, it's just simply to go out and do the survey. For, and this does include biotic and geomorphological, but it's also additional surveys. It could be topographic, it could be geotechnical, it could be any of those other ones as well, cultural. The, for the biotic and geomorphological, we will be asking for a right of entry for the Minnesota properties because very few of the Minnesota properties that have been identified for biotic and geotechnical evaluation have actually had the first round of biotic and geomorphological testing. And the goal with biotic and geomorphological testing is to set a baseline from before project and compare that to what happens after project. My understanding is that this will be, in 2020, will be the last round of pre-project baseline setting surveys. And then there won't be any additional surveys until after project completion. So we're probably looking at that five to seven-year timeframe. So this year in Minnesota, since we don't have the exact bounds of what property rights would be necessary, we are asking for a right of entry. And then once they go out and they do that baseline study, they will be able to identify the access points to get on the rivers, which is always a problem because they have to get out of the canoe or a small boat. And we will also be able to identify areas where it needs to be a little bit wider than, you know, than other areas. The core will then provide a map to the local sponsors. The local sponsors will then have surveyors go out and provide meets and bounds legal descriptions for what would be permanently necessary to allow for biotic and geomorphological surveys on an ongoing basis. And when I say ongoing basis, the best I understand right now, because it's called an adaptive management plan that we need to comply with, the adaptive management plan is something that changes. But the way the plan is currently set up, after project, there would be surveys every other year for three cycles. So approximately every other year for six years. And then there would be surveys every fifth year for three cycles. So then between six years and 21 years, there would be three surveys. And then after that, there's no planned surveys, except anytime during the course of the adaptive management plan that the project is used, they would have to go out after that to identify, to do another survey. So if the, if the plan is used every 20 years, the expectation would be that it would be used twice in the next 50 years on a theoretical probabilistic level. So that would be two times, and then you would also have the sixth that are planned. So in the next 50 years, the right, the easement from after project going forward would be used eight times.
Okay. Mr. Bearden, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yo, Kurt.
You can step up to the microphone if you want.
Over here, I didn't find it.
Hmm?
I didn't find it.
No. Please state your name for us, please.
My name is Kurt Bearden, so I'm manager of CW Valley Co-op, and we are one of the 26 properties. The reason that we have not signed this yet is we do not feel like we've been told exactly what's going to happen to our property. We have met with diversion authority members, and they have assured us that there is no impact to that piece of property. I'm talking about a piece of property along 75 and County Road 2 that we have our agronomy center and fuel stations on. And we've met with Eric Dodge, Bob Zimmerman, Roger Olson. They've all said we will not impact this property. In fact, we've looked at expansion, but this is going to limit that. We got this easement letter, and I didn't take action on it right away. And a week after I received it, I get a phone call and I asked some questions, you know, why, why do we need to sign this? What is the scope of the environmental study? And the gist that I got from the conversation was, we need the environmental study in case of acquisition. Okay, so I have an agronomy center and a fuel plant there. I do not really care to have an environmental study done in case something's found. We run a very good operation, I'm not scared of anything being found. It's very clean, we keep all the regulations up. My concern is, where did the acquisition statement come from when we've been guaranteed that this property is not going to be impacted as far as losing any of it? That's why we have not signed it. I cannot, I have not had a board meeting since we received that letter because the farming situation this year has been a struggle for these guys to get their crops off. We do have a third quarter audit meeting scheduled within a week that will address this. But I don't think we've been told the whole story or all the things that should be told to us. That's why we have not signed it and sent back.
You said you have a meeting coming up within the next week?
Within the next week.
So I'm sure, I'm sure these people would be happy to address any questions that you have regarding this matter prior to your board meeting, too, since...
I have a seven-member board. This isn't my decision to sign this easement letter. It's a board decision since it's going to impact our company for years to come. I think in goodwill, I think somebody should meet with my board and explain.
Well, I'm sure that they would make somebody available to be at your board meeting to answer any questions that your members might have, too.
And one of the questions will be, the map we have definitely shows impact on our property. I think they need assurance of what that impact's going to be. If you should, if you make that property any smaller, it's not going to work for us. That property, we'll have to move from that site. So I think some answers need to be given to the board, and I would like to have somebody come give them face to face.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And what's requested is a, because of the buildings on the property, is a hazardous waste survey to check those out. And also, the only impact I'm seeing on that property is road raised south of the property. So really, we're not impacting it. I know the, the right of entry is to do hazardous toxic waste surveys because of the buildings on there. But yeah, the only thing we have on there is a road raised south of the property.
But wouldn't a road raised south impede on what the easement currently is on that south side of the property? It would cut in, if you raise the road, you're going to have to move the ditch over to suffice for the, correct? You can't make the ditches steeper to raise the road. So I think what he's saying is if you raise the road, the ditch is going to have to move over.
And I think, I think that all those are great questions, and Mr. Bearden is raising a good issue of, well, what's going to happen? And I have no personal knowledge of this particular property, I'm not an engineer. But throughout this process, what my understanding of the purpose of the right of entry is, is to answer those questions. So without the right of entry, without the soil borings, without the ability to design this project, we can't answer those questions. And I understand that many of your constituents want answers to those questions. The best way to get those answers is to allow the study to happen. Now, the, I know that on the North Dakota side, there's been a variety of different reasons of why the project has changed over the past 10 years. But I do know that there have been changes as a result of the studies that have taken place. Slight movements of locations of the project components, all the way to complete redesigns. But without the, without all the technical information about what is there, the designers can't make their final decisions about what the design is going to look like. And that is the whole purpose of getting on the property to do these entries. And that is why this is not, this is not an eminent domain action. This is not a taking because we don't know what we're going to take. We don't know what is necessary for this project, and therefore we couldn't take anything. But we do know that the project is moving forward, and something is going to be necessary. Some properties, and many of the properties that are identified in this 26 will have some sort of an impact. Exactly what that is, we just don't know yet.
Okay. So Jessica, you can be in touch with Mr. Bearden, and they'll see that you have somebody at your meeting to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, any questions for the board, for these fine people?
I just have a comment. You know, I'm on the Planning Commission, and part of that is a 10-day notice period, and we send letters to everyone about what the potential action would be. And so I, I know there's a lot of gray areas with these individuals about this meeting particularly. And so I just, I know you suggested possibly delaying something or sending out another letter. I really feel, because I'm on the Land Management Committee, and I've heard tons of conversations about being as flexible as possible, and, you know, the diversion authority was proud about the lack of eminent domain cases on the Fargo side. And I get that this is an eminent domain, but people view it as one and the same. And so I, I think, I'm concerned at the lack of communication, be it from this board or whoever, about what was going to happen on the 15th of November if they didn't sign. There just seems to be a gray area.
There was a letter sent out to property owners from the MCC JPA also kind of doing an overview of what these rights of entry are, and please take this into consideration. So there was that letter.
Did it say there was going to be action by the Clay County Board on this date?
Oh wait, I don't think they would say that until an action is taken because I don't think you can say that to people unless...
But I think you should say that at 8:30, and the forum said it. I mean, why didn't we, why didn't we say that in the letter to people? The forum had it in an article last night that we were going to talk about.
Well, they also said it was eminent domain, didn't they?
Right, and I just told you that, you know, I understand this is different. But I just, I think we need to have a little more time to work with some of these people.
They've had time, they've had months.
Can you explain to their, this wasn't, this wasn't our first communication with those landowners?
No.
Wasn't there a, a communication with a return receipt requested letter sent to every property owner?
Every property owner had a return.
That gave them the opportunity to respond and to get the necessary information for them?
Yes, and then those were followed up by three or four phone calls and in-person knocking on the doors.
Did you say the Clay County Board would take this up on November 26th? Did anyone ever say that?
To who, sorry?
Any of these people on this list. I called people on Wednesday, and they had zero clue that this was going to be...
Who did you call?
Individuals.
On this list?
Yes.
That they didn't know we were bringing this to you?
To this board for action within this week.
Okay. But did they receive the letter from the MCC JPA saying...
Yes, but what, but you're not understanding...
Because if you don't, we're going to bring it to Clay County.
Right, but there never was an end date, and that's my point. And any other open hearing that we have to have, Planning Commission level on up, we send letters out to let them know when and where it is.
And that's what will happen today. If the resolution gets passed, they will get a letter saying this is, you have 10 days, this is what's going to be happening, and then you have time to act. So there, I don't feel anything good would come from putting this off. I think these property owners have been notified, and I think that we're going to notify them again with another letter saying, please take this into consideration again.
There's going to be more time in between when this action is taken, so...
Yes.
I would also say the MCC JPA board was concerned about putting in hard deadlines, about if you don't do this by the 15th, this will happen because there was a process in place to, if they did not, if they did not respond, it would be referred to this board. And so the MCC JPA didn't want to put hard dates in the letter. They were trying to be friendly, fair, and flexible in their approach in dealing with landowners. And certainly, you know, we can take it back to the board that, you know, if there's a desire to be, you know, put more pressure on landowners by saying, thou shall act within this time period. But I think the board members felt that they wanted to give landowners an opportunity to feel like they weren't being pressured in this situation before it got referred to Clay County.
And I understand that, but there's a reason, Kurt. If he would have known there was a hard deadline, he would have scheduled a board meeting so the board could act, right, Kurt? I mean, this is, and so if I get a letter that says my electric bill is due by XMO, and I'm going to make sure and act on that. And so I understand trying to be fair and flexible and not having that hard date. But I just think that in this instance, you know, I'm not sure because people are in the, you know, I can look at this list, and I can tell you who's in the field, and I know there's been a, you know, some of these people have been out of town because of family death. I mean, I, I live next to these people, these are my neighbors, I get it. So I just, I think there is still a level of gray that we just have not gotten through to them.
And even if we act on this today, our land agents are going to continue to work with these people. And if they're going to show indication of cooperation, there's not going to be, they're not going to follow through with the need to go to court. Whether, whether it's, you know, if it's a time issue for them, I'm sure our land agents will come to the, you know, the Joint Powers Board and explain that, and we'll work with them. I, it, this is more about, from what we've heard from our land agents, is there's just been no response whatsoever.
In Cast County, sometimes we won't get movement on these really until the rights of, rights of entry kind of get pushed a little bit, like we're saying right now. So we will have probably 15 signed, and then we will send this next letter out that we're requesting, and then we will get the rest signed, usually what happens.
Now, we do have some signed as well, though.
And then the last week, they've had some signed.
Yeah, we've had some, not in the last week, but even before then, we've had some voluntarily signed, especially after the MCC JPA sent another letter out, kind of saying, hey, take this into consideration, please. So we've had people signing weekly.
Okay, well, what are the board's wishes on this area?
I would move Resolution 2019-41.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Sorry.
Okay, we...
The resolution that I had provided had the date, the day I sent it over, November 21st. I do have a new one of November 26th. I do have a new one of November 26th, which is today's date, and I'm not sure, I didn't know that-
Is everything, all the other wording is the same?
Everything else is identical, and I also don't have Resolution 2019-41, I just didn't, I'm not familiar enough with-
I think, did you, that falls in sequence with our resolution number. So just, we can just note for the record that the date of that resolution has changed to today's date.
And then the next question is, the resolution indicates that a letter will go out, who do you want to have sign on?
Okay, so that's an action by this board, so our board, either our board chair or administrator should-
Thank you, I'll get that sent over as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else to come before the board this morning?
Anything, county attorney?
So did we, if I can just go back, so Jessica, the date of the December meeting with, it's an open meeting that's for all the potential properties on the Minnesota side that we're gonna be doing, asking for, wanting to have easements for the bio, correct? So can just-
Eventually, there would be an easement. This year, it is a right-of-entry, so again, you know-
Okay, so the Minnesota properties right now, it's not even an easement, then it's-
Exactly. Yep, and that is a big distinction here, is that there's no permanent acquisition of anything. You know, if a landowner shows up and says, you know, I don't wanna be bothered by this anymore, can I just sign something and be done with it? We would have to oversize the area that we think is necessary, but we have done that. You know, I mean, if it's a Moorhead, City of Moorhead, for example, has a lot of properties that are impacted here. If they wanna sign an easement today, allowing for biotic and geomorphological, we would just do that for the entire block, it's many of the byouts. So they would sign it for the entire lot and block instead of, you know, the west 45 feet of a lot and block.
So we got a request from the Corps about them wanting to do these biological and geomorphological studies in North Dakota and Minnesota along watersheds. So what we've been doing in North Dakota has been having these outreach meetings to property owners, kinda discussing what these surveys are gonna entail, and then we have the property owners come and ask us, and the Corps questions, and the Corps comes down from St. Paul, and it's been really great. We have slides, we have monuments, we have the biologists come down, talk about what kind of fish are in the river, how they shock the fish, you know, kinda things they've figured out, and it's been really great to help answer questions.
Okay. So this, this meeting for all those that could be requested of the bio, they're invited to this meeting on December 11th from-
Six to 8 p.m.
Six to 8 p.m., and that's gonna be at the Law Enforcement Center right here. And I do think, you know, and I brought this up with our MCC JPA, that if three or more of us go there, that it needs to be shown as an open meeting, or a public meeting. And I'm thinking that maybe we should also do that as a Clay County Board in the event that more than three of us show up there, it's just a matter of getting that posted, Steve, for-
What time is that meeting?
And that's from 6 to 8 on the 11th. And I know there's been, you know, based on what we heard from the ones that have been done in Cass County, they've had some pretty good turnouts at some of those, and they've gotten, and I think the landowners have gotten good information.
Yes.
And this is, the Corps will be, the Corps and your group will lead that presentation.
Yep, it's really a great opportunity for property owners, and a lot of the actions that have come out from these meetings have been to, we've taken into consideration these property owners' issues and concerns, and we've actually put some of those concerns into the easement. So it used to be perpetual, and now there's an end date on it. So these have been a really good opportunity for property owners to come to.
And one more time, so just for clarification on compensation, so what we did today, so when it comes to a soil boring, there will be a payment made to a landowner for soil borings.
Yep, $250 per soil boring, and then, um-
And any crop damage?
And any crop damage would be, it's kinda decided by you.
Or field damage?
Field damage.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's kinda, they had it calculated for highest crop at the time. And so with these easements, so first in Minnesota, we need to figure out what we need, so we're gonna do rights of entry, and then when we come back at the end of 2020, middle of the end, I would say, we will have decided what we actually want an easement on, and then we will bring that to the property owners, and it's $750 per parcel for those.
And that's for that longer period of time easement?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's for the longer one.
That's the biotic and geomorphological.
Which is pretty much, in most cases, right along riverbank.
Right along the river, and again, you know, expectation if the property, under the current plan, and if the property, if the project is used every 20-ish type years, you're looking at eight times for the next 50 years that somebody would access your property.
And the Corps really wants to just stay in the river, they really don't wanna have to go onto people's property. They're gonna avoid it as much as possible, and they will restate that again at the meeting on December 11th, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Anything else? Where are you, Jerry?